Here.
Mr. Lucas.
Here, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Motion to approve of the agenda, please.
Summate.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Marks?
Yes.
Ms. Yaki?
Yes.
Ms. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas.
Yes, thank you. I need a motion to approve of the minutes of board work session, August 15th, 2019, attachment 01, and regular board meeting, August 15th, 2019.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Marks?
Yes.
Ms. Yaki?
Yes.
Ms. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas.
Yes, thank you. Now we come to E., Presentations. Mr. Paul Daniels. Mr. Dan Jaeger.
President Lucas, members of the Board of Education. We have had a very busy start to the school year in the arts world. Our marching band has started competition, and they were most recently grand champions at the King's Competition. Drama performed Curious Incident last weekend for 972 patrons. So that's just over 70 percent of the seats available for our fall play is extraordinary. Choir students have performed the National Anthem at multiple events, at school and around the community, which has been great. And I would like to thank the Board of Education and Mrs. House for the continued support for our students in arts education. Tonight, we'll continue to rec... Tonight, we will continue recognizing student artists from the district. This month, we will highlight works from Milford High School, and a special thank you to Mr. Kaufman for being here tonight as well. The artwork of these students will remain on display in the administrative offices until the next board meeting. High school students are always a little tricky. I've got one playing soccer tonight across the road and work schedule, so they're not all here. But we added a new dimension this year, a third dimension, I guess, with some pottery. Olivia Lovelace is an AP Studio student. Two of the bulls behind me are hers. She could not be here. Trinity Store is in ceramics with Mr. Shepherd. One of... One of the bulls behind me is hers, so Trinity, I know you're here. Will Hoyt Kaufman. I don't think I saw Will. I know he was unsure whether he could make it or not. The other bull belongs to Will. Ella Hummel. One of the photography projects was Ella's. She also had to work. I know Sidney's here, Sidney Winger. Her picture is the one right behind me. So Sidney is in Photography 1. Isaiah Flannery is in Graphic Design. Isaiah is the one playing soccer tonight. This is his artwork here. That was used as the summer reading artwork that you may have seen this summer for the high school. And then Lauren Cope. I know Lauren is here. Lauren's in Photography. And Lauren's is the tree limb there. So our kids do great, continue to do great things. You know, this is September. These students have been in class for five weeks. So what we've produced so far is pretty exciting. Look forward to what they produce the rest of the year. You know, and obviously, for the high school, the next time you'll see their artwork on display is at the art show in April. So once again, thank you for taking time to recognize our student artists. And at this time, I'm going to turn the microphone over to high school students Lexi Fields and Jacob Hams. Jacob are going to share with you about the Hope Squad.
Hello. I'm Lexi Fields. I'm a senior at Milford High School.
And I'm Jacob Hams, and I'm a sophomore at Milford High School.
So today, we're kind of going to talk about the Hope Squad and what it's all about within our school. It's kind of like, most people don't really know what goes on with it, so we just kind of wanted to explain a little bit about what it is, what we do, and how we're trying to impact our community.
So last year, Hope Squad came to Milford High School for the first time, and also to schools around the Cincinnati area. And so all these schools together, through Grant's Hope and a couple of other organizations, have helped to bring this. And so this year, we are starting our second year at the high school and are soon to start our first semester of it in January at the junior high school.
Yeah. So Hope Squad is a school-based peer-to-peer suicide prevention program. So we have students throughout the building who are nominated from the student body, who they feel are trustworthy, or kind, or who they would feel comfortable talking to if they had some problems with mental illness and those kind of issues. And so they voted in their peers, and we created a Hope Squad. Once you're voted in, you stay until you graduate high school. And we work hard to learn the signs and things. We have trainings, once a month, twice a month? Yes. And we learn the sides of suicide ideation, things that we can do to help students in case they're struggling, resources we can provide. So yeah, we are kind of like the eyes and ears of the school.
Yeah. So along with that, many of our students in the Hope Squad, there's about 40 of them, eight to 10th grade, are representative of different organizations, different extracurriculars, different sports teams across the high school. And so they act as those eyes and ears to watch for signs when somebody might not be feeling the greatest that day, or has been experiencing depression for a while.
Yeah. And although we are trained to see the signs and try and help our peers, we are not trained to be counselors. We're not trained to know the... What we should do, or, you know, try and resolve it ourselves. We always turn to an adult, one of the advisors, Mr. Will Cates, or Mr. Kevin Metzger, or our school counselors. We always use resources. And we also partner with local mental health providers as well. We give them resources so they can get some help if they need it.
So why Hope Squad? So right now, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 15 and 24, the target age of everyone in the high school. And so Hope Squad focuses on this intentional outreach to students in distress.
Yeah. So students who would have otherwise been missed, who probably wouldn't have gone to the counselor and sought help for what they're going through, they're more likely to be caught and helped, even if they weren't, you know, they wouldn't necessarily go up and talk to somebody. We would come up and approach them and try and help them as best as we could.
And then, so not only actively watching for the signs of students that may be experiencing some of these things, we're also working to create a stigma-free culture within the high school, to make an environment where people feel safe and protected, and that they can be supported when they might not be feeling the greatest that day.
Yeah. It's an open environment, so students aren't ashamed or afraid to share what they're going through, and to know that they're not the only ones going through that in the school. So what are some of our goals? So obviously, we're trying to improve the overall mental health and wellness of our student body. We care very much about them, and we want them to be successful, not only academically, but emotionally, and they key together. So it's very important to have those two in alignment.
And then reaching students in need quickly and efficiently and intentionally. Sometimes, things go on for weeks, months, and they're unrecognized. And so by having Hope Squad members that are actively looking, these things can be found, people can get help much sooner.
And we're also hoping to reach parents and outside community members to also spread awareness and teach people who wouldn't otherwise know the resources or those kind of things around mental health, so we can provide resources and kind of show them what it's all about and what we're doing.
And then ultimately, to reduce and eliminate suicide.
Yep. So we have some upcoming events we wanted to let you know about. We've got quite a few coming up. Last year, we had our first Hope Week. That was so fun. We had... Every day was a particular, special thing we would do for the students. So one day was like giving out lifesavers, because that's our thing, the lifesavers. We would hand out bracelets, or we just gave hugs at the beginning of the day if anybody needed them, just to make somebody's day brighter. So we're excited to start a new Hope Week this year. We're not sure when it's going to be yet, but we are very hopeful that it will be as successful as last year.
And so right now, in all of our events that we already have scheduled or are looking to schedule, they're all looking at this overall way to impact students to create a better school culture.
Yeah. So throughout October, we're going to be starting to assist parents and students of the freshman community who have just been voted in. The students voted yesterday for their peers, so we'll kind of get them in and start training them, and getting them acquired to their environment in the Hope Squad. October 4th, we're going to be participating in the homecoming parade, so you'll see us there. We'll try and be on a float, if everybody can make it. But like we said, we're all in different activities, so that might not be easy, but we're going to try. And then November 5th.
Yeah. So we will be going to the Greater Cincinnati Hope Squad Conference, brought to us by Grant's Hope, where we will get to experience different trainings on topics in suicide prevention from leading professionals in the mental health field. And so November 5th is actually a day that we do not have school, and this is a day thing. So last year was a field trip. This year, there's no school. Our advisors came to us, and they're like, "We understand if you don't want to go to this, because it's your day off school." And every Hope Squad member said, "No, we want to be there. We want to get this training. We want to do these things."
And we did go there last year. It was an amazing experience. We had different breakout sessions, different opportunities to learn more things that we might not have learned within our trainings in Hope Squad. And we also got to talk to different Hope Squad members from different schools around the area, and kind of discuss with them things that we have gone through, or things that we've experienced with a student, and kind of just bouncing off each other for ideas and trying to help our fellow students. Throughout... Or December 7th, we'll be at the craft show, giving out free wrapping services. So we'll be there. You'll see us. We'll probably have some bracelets or things to give you, but we will be there. Throughout January, we will start the kickoff for the junior high Hope Squad. We're so excited to start that, and kind of start it early, and kind of plant that base for the stigma-free environment and things like that, as soon as they get to junior high.
And then, so then throughout this entire year as well, beyond just these scheduled events, we're looking to find ways to connect with the community, to connect with students, and to build that positivity, handing out bracelets, crisis response information, T-shirts, and most importantly, spreading hope.
Yeah. So Hope Squad is so important to us. It's already made a huge impact within our school. It's been both impactful personally and with other people throughout the school. It's just bringing light to some darkness that people have, and just giving them hope for the next day, and hope to move on, and, you know, become who they want to become. And happy.
So we want to thank you all, and the district, and the community, and our high school, and our students, and everyone's support for this continuing Hope Squad and what this will bring in the future.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lexi and Jacob, thank you. Thank you for a very eloquent summary of the work of Hope Squad. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for the leadership of all Hope Squad members. Many of you know that this was both a personal and a professional mission and goal to bring Hope Squad to Milford High School, and I'm beyond thrilled that you are helping to provide the leadership to start the Hope Squad at the junior high as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to say that it's a very unselfish and honorable position you're in, and it's amazing. I only wish we had this years ago, but it's so great to see it develop and grow from last year to now. And my thanks go out to all of you.
I can't wait to see where it goes.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
You all are such impressive young people. Thank you for doing what you're doing, and that you would make such a huge time commitment despite everything else that you're involved in. And like you said, you know, going on November 5th when you're not in school, that really shows that you care deeply about what you're doing, and I'm sure that shows to your fellow students. So thank you.
Okay. Now we have the Student Council Representatives, Jordan Reer, Alexa Roush, and Ashley Derempel.
I'm Emma McManus. I am in the PR position with Ashley. Jordan and Alexa are the Student Council Presidents, but Ashley couldn't be here with me tonight, so I'm just kind of updating on what Student Council's been doing so far this year. Right now, we're focused on homecoming, which is October 5th, you guys all know. The theme is "Out of This World," and one of the advisors actually gave us the idea of kind of minimalizing decorations and focusing more on, like a DJ, because a lot... That's the complaint we get every single year, is that they don't like the music. And so we think the students are less focused on, like, the look of homecoming, because everybody's doing pictures before, they're doing the scenery before, and they're just coming to have a good time. And so we're trying to kind of adapt to what the students want and put our kind of budget elsewhere. And for the parade is October 4th. It's going to follow the same course that it has last year. It's 5:45 to 6:45. And a cool thing we're doing this year, the grand marshals for the parade are actually going to be the staff members that have been affected by cancer. And so we're kind of... I don't know what the word is. Like, we're commemorating them that way a little bit. And also, Wednesday on Spirit Week is going to be like a cancer collection day. And I'm not sure if we're wearing pink for breast cancer and like making it a pink spirit day, or if there's a universal cancer color that we're going to do, but we're going to try to make that another way to kind of give back to them and notice that they've been strong, and they've been, like, I don't know. We're just recognizing them in that way. And so not on Student Council, just kind of as a student perspective. We launched Eagle Block this year at the high school, and that's just like a 20-minute period in between second and third bell to kind of give students a chance to, like, regroup, recuperate. It's kind of... It's been a chance for a lot of people to have, like, a breakfast, because you're not eating at 6:15 in the morning. So the cafeteria does have snacks and little coffees and things for people to purchase. Teachers have nests, which are like kind of special activities that they've chosen to lead. And so they're getting students excited about those. A couple teachers are doing yoga and drawing things, and it's super cool. The teachers are super excited about it. They're getting kids super excited about it. It's been very successful. I think everybody's enjoying it. It's kind of given us a nice break in between, a kind of... Just kind of refresh, so we go into third period ready, in the right mindset of being ready to learn again. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma.
Okay. Now we come to Community Advisory Team presentation. Ms. House?
It is with great pride and pleasure that I introduce the four members of the Community Advisory Team who are going to present this evening. This group was organized post-May bond failure to look at next steps for facilities and potential future bond. They have been meeting since June and had a sixth and last meeting last evening. And the four representatives who are going to speak volunteered and were supported by the rest of the committee to do so. So I'd like to introduce the four presenters. They are Clay Barclay, Rob Hewlett, Lisa McKenney, and Matt Petersman. Are they out there practicing?
They're not that way.
Okay. Mr. Jaeger's going to get them. Did they go that way? They're making an entrance.
So we figured it would stop. I was like, trying not to interrupt.
No, that was perfect, so. So I will introduce them again. Lisa McKenney, Matt Petersman, Clay Barclay, and Rob Hewlett.
Thank you. I guess we don't have to do that then. Okay, is this on? Yes?
Yes.
Perfect. There it is. Hello. Thank you for having us. So we just want to present to the board what we came away with from our experience with the Community Advisory Team. I just want to quickly point out, this right here, this is all of the documents that I collected over the time of the CAT team process. 98 percent provided by the administration, thank goodness, but there was a lot of information to go through. And I think... I think it's pretty impressive that we came away with one plan to present tonight, albeit with some considerations that we could not come to a consensus on. So the Community Advisory Team met six times, beginning in June. And I would say probably for a total of 14 hours or more, we had a couple of meetings that went over. During that time, we learned the history of the district's master facilities plans. We learned that the districts had an ongoing 20-year relationship with the OFCC, and that helped structure our plans. One of the things that we learned was back in 2002, when the district partnered with OFCC and the ELP program to build the four elementary schools, that that kind of put us in an ongoing relationship with OFCC. So we don't, like, apply every year. We're just kind of inside this process. After we took the credit that we earned from the elementary schools and the ninth-grade community, and the high school renovations, and those projects were... They started in 2002. The ninth-grade community, et cetera, was in 2008. And then in 2013, we cashed in our credit to build Boyd and CyPelt, and then that moved us into the CFAP portion of the OFCC program. And that's where we are with the co-funding, where any project that we do going forward, if we want OFCC involved on it, we... It's co-funded. And they, in turn, help us with the architect. You know, they pick the architect with us and the construction company, so it was a lot to learn about how that process worked, especially switching, because they're different between ELP and CFAP. We talked a lot about how funding works and how bidding works when we get to that point. We talked about how master plans are developed. We looked at neighboring districts and, like Goshen, for example, and looked at their master plans and learned how they're doing it as well. We looked at the condition of buildings and the OFCC recommendations. For co-funding, we have to abide by the OFCC recommendations, or they don't help co-fund. And then in between all of that, our group did a very good job of sharing ideas, concerns, Q and A. We had some really great discussions. We did two high school building tours, and, well, we had the opportunity to attend one of two high school building tours. We didn't tour it twice. And then we had the opportunity to do a Q and A with the OFCC representative, which the board also was able to talk with him and observe us asking those questions. The demographics of the CAT team, most CAT members represented more than one category. This is going to be hard for me to remember. Oops, sorry. To do the clicker. There we go. He's a clicker guy, so he's got it. All right. So the demographics of the CAT team, most CAT members represented more than one group, but we had business owners, we had parents of current students, we had empty nesters, we had some staff. We had attendees who never had children in school. We had people who were against the May bond issue, like myself. And the age breakdown, as it's known, you can see there. I would say, I think it was 66 members were invited, and I would say we probably had a solid 50 of those people who participated throughout. Not everybody could make every meeting, but they always came back, so that was nice. Some of the things that we considered... I'm just going to go with it. So some of the things that were considered while we were meeting over those six meetings, we looked at the original master plan scope that was developed with the OFCC. And I think honestly, we were going all the way back, the 20 years from when it began, and was looking at that relationship. The original master plan scope that we were looking at is kind of what needed... What was left, the final phase, the items that needed to be addressed. And that was renovating the high school, replacing the junior high, and adding additional square footage for the modulators, campus improvements with traffic and parking efficiency and safety upgrades. And then Success Academy, they were in the modulators at the junior high, or R, and the CAT team was very supportive of including them in the new building. We looked at the preschool and the condition of the preschool building, and then space concerns within our elementary schools, and possibly integrating the preschool into the elementary schools. We looked at a new auditorium, a 1,000-seat auditorium to replace the 350-seat auditorium. And then the 2016 master plan had the athletic replacements as well, displaced buildings like the wrestling facility, if we're building a new junior high, visitor bleachers in the stadium, adding restrooms to the stadium. So in developing a facilities master plan, you also, we learned, have to consider the assessment of all of the current buildings. And with OFCC co-funding, you do have to follow their recommendation of replace over renovate if they find a building to be... Was it 25 percent?
Cost-effective.
Cost-effective. To replace over renovate, then you have to go with that recommendation with them. We look at enrollment projections, site information, and availability. Availability would pertain to space for any additions or renovations or relocations. We looked at community values regarding education. So way back at the beginning of the master facilities plan, it was decided within this community that they... We wanted neighborhood schools, as opposed to grade-level schools. So that's one of the community values that comes out of the community work. The ninth-grade community was also a result of that. And then safety and STEM and other considerations. The educational needs, of course, science labs. I mean, education, we learned, is changing at lightning speed. So, you know, science labs and STEM and robotics and all of these things that I had no idea when I was in school is now an everyday part of life for our students, so we have to have space and accommodations for those. Community needs and educator expertise, continuing education and career development. And then operational costs, which include transportation, staffing, maintenance. For example, the preschool being in a large building that's being maintained, but if we move them up into the elementary schools, and that's one less building that were maintained... Community needs and educator expertise, continuing education and career development. And then operational costs, which include transportation, staffing, maintenance. For example, the preschool being in a large building that's being maintained. But if we move them up into the elementary schools, then that's one less building that we're maintaining. So, that's, those sort of conversations are the conversations we were having. We learned about the OFCC design timeline. And this, this was a doozy, all of the OFCC information was a doozy. It, it took some time to sort it, sort through it, but with OFCC co-funding, you, you can't even get designs and estimates on designs until you have the funding in place because the OFCC co chooses the architect and the construction company. And the OFCC requires that you have your share in place before they'll go through that process with you. There's, you know, I had questions of, you know, how, why do we have a concept? Why don't we have a design? And that was why. So, to get from schematic design to construction with OFCC, you're looking at thirty to thirty-six months overall. That's, that's a lengthy process. We looked at the bond history of the district. There was a bond in February nineteen eighty-seven, which changed the current high school from being the junior high to the high school and the high school into the junior high. That bond has been paid off. In March two thousand and one, the community passed a bond for the construction of the four elementary schools with the understanding that we would be getting credit for those, for that construction to go towards future projects with OFCC. We did earn twenty-seven percent credit on that. And that bond is scheduled to be paid off in two thousand and thirty. And then in November of two thousand and seven, the community also passed a bond. And that was the addition to the high school to eliminate sixteen classrooms that were in modulars. That also earned the credit with ELP for the OFCC. And that bond is scheduled to be paid off in two thousand and thirty-seven. We also learned about bond millage scenarios. I understand it as like a interest rate on a home mortgage. And so, if you look at the slide, you can see that depending upon the bond amount and the bond length will depend upon the millage rate and the annual cost to the taxpayer. After we learned all of that, we went through the process of trying to figure out how to put together a master facilities plan.
Hello, my name's Clay Barclay, I also was on the CAT team. Before I dive into this, I just wanted to point out a couple of things, once you was going through there, that, that I really appreciated with team was the diversity. We had a really good diverse group with lots of different skill sets, opinions, you know, coming from both sides. And I really do want to stress that because we had some very good conversations in our process. And speaking of our process, how, how we worked. We started out with community feedback. I don't know how many people here were involved in that, but that was an online process where people were able to pose questions through a service they, they brought about, or they, they used. And they could pose questions and then vote on the issues, or pose issues and problems. Then, then you would in turn, look at the other ones that are already there and vote on whether or not they were of concern to you. That information was actually used to fuel our process in our first meeting. And, and she, and she covered a lot of the details of how we, we did that first meeting, but there was a tremendous amount of learning. I mean, here we are, very much, like ninety-nine percent of us, very much laypeople in the process of school building. And so, we had a lot of catch-up. There were a lot of people who were very skeptical in the room. We were all voters and we all had strong opinions and that's why we were there. And so, we had to get to the point where we, we learned the background, we learned all, all the information about how the state works and a very, very complicated process that it was. And so, the, the first meeting, that's what we did cover. And we understood, and we learned history of it. We just, just to make sure everyone's on the same page, we learned about all the schools and, and the his, the timeline that they were all brought about, brought into existence. Every time I left one of those meetings, I found myself just, just, you know, my eyes were opened that much further. But yet, every single time I went back, we had so many more questions. And I mean, if you were to be a fly on the wall during those meetings, you would see that the questions never dried up. I mean, we had a certain period of time, every, each session, and we always shot past it because we had so much information to download. We wanted to learn a lot to do this process, to qualify ourselves, to be able to, to, you know, work through these options. All right, our second meeting. We had an exercise. I thi, I felt that was kind of good to understand the group, where we, we basically listed out our values for the educational process and what we thought was most important. And we was, we typically would work in teams, we'd group into tables and work through that. And then we would put our options up. And at the end of each session, we would also have offline questions too, because the questions never ended. So, we would, we would leave questions behind and then the, the follow-up to that would come before the next meeting, so we'd get the answers online. The third meeting, we reviewed the, the data and started talking about our options. Initially, when we started talking about options, they were very, very open-ended. We were discussing things as if anything was possible. Yeah, twenty-three. We, yeah, twenty-three, twenty-plus options. We, we did a pretty good job brainstorming. And we were not tied to any kind of financial, financial concerns at that point. It was just a process to really get us to open up and get us thinking about our options before we start, you know, pulling out the wallet, so to speak. So, then they had the community feedback. This was when they would actually, in this room, they would invite people, I think it was like three sessions maybe each time, different times of the week and different times of the day, try and maximize how many people could come in. They would present our data and our, and our, where we're going and try and get some sort of direction from the community that, you know, beyond the CAT team, to just keep us fed with, with community information and opinion, so we don't still start going too far off. And then our follow-up meeting after that was to discuss those findings from those individuals. So, that was the fourth meeting. And then now, at that point, we had gone ahead and narrowed our options down to ten. I think that's about when we started bringing in the financial information. And suddenly, things looked totally different. It's a little bit, kind of like, just letting a little bit of reality eke in on us. But it was very good, it was eye-opening, it was a good process for us. It, it really kind of matured our, our brains a little bit in, in the process of working with the building school systems.
Clay, that's when I met you, we wrestled right here on the pool.
All right, let's see here, meeting five. We always started out reviewing the data from previous meetings, going over our questions that were asked before. And then we worked, a lot of discussion. As we went along, there was more and more and more discussions. We were opening up, we were starting to really get to know each other. We were finding out who's kind of like on our side and who, who we need to bring over. And we were, we were talking more and more and more, getting to know each other and kind of get to be like a bunch of friends at this point. And I'm, I'm sure it was someone, poor Nancy, she had to kind of reel us back in a lot, but, but it was all conversation for good things, so, all about the schools. But yes, in that meeting, we did get it down to five options. Then they went into the next session of community feedback, where they showed in the open forum, same setup as before, the five options and let the community again vote on those options. And then, so. Oh, yeah, I forgot. Yes, and in between that session, there was an online survey too. And I, I hope all of you got a chance to see that and contributed, because we, the more information, the better. It was very, very interesting information, we had a lot of reading, a lot of comments. We took a lot of value from the comments. Now, not just answering the questions, but there were sections where you can just type in what you thought about things. And we, we listened to that because it was good to kind of reconnect from the, with the community that we were kind of, you know, leaving behind as we learned about how the process works. And it acted as a way to remind us where we were coming from. You know, if we were voting no, why did we vote no? Oh, yeah, I remember thinking that. If we're voting yes, oh, yeah, I remember thinking that. And we had a lot of comments from both sides, it's very good for us and helped keep us, or grounded. So, we discussed that during our last meeting. And I still had a thick, thick piece of packet of paper with all those comments, we'll keep that one for a while. Good night, Tommy. All right, so then we, on the last, on the last meeting. It was good stuff, very good, we highly appreciated it. On the last meeting, we narrowed it down to three options. And we're, then, then we kind of worked, within the same meeting, we turned it right around and we brought it down to the, to the one option that we're gonna be discussing here shortly. And then we found as a group that there were these, we liked the option, but we wanted to, we had some kind of standalone considerations that need to be dealt with. Things that either kind of slipped through the cracks a little bit during our initial discussions, like, you know, oops, forgot about that kind of thing, but we need to make sure it's discussed, but we haven't come to a decision, so we just kind of put them on the, the potpourri list. It's just basically a number of other questions that need to be answered, but they're lesser to, to the main options. But, so, I guess we can go through the options. First, the five options that we, we started with here. So, option A is your, is probably your most basic option, I, I kept referring to as the base. So, in, one thing that we found out, when we discussed the junior high and we were doing the open-ended discussion where money was not an issue, we could do whatever we want, we could put in two swimming pools if, if we felt that was a good thing for the community. We, we had a few ideas for how to handle the junior high. But when money came in and we started talking to each other, it was really substantially, short period of time, I should say, that we came to the conclusion that the best option was the junior high would go from sixth to eighth grade, eighth grade. There's a lot of factors that we can discuss about that, as to why. But when we start playing this out, you'll start to see exactly why. But the group very quickly adhered to that concept. It just works really well. All things considered. So, option B is basically base option plus the auditorium. Auditorium was a very important issue to a lot of people. And we had to make sure that that was there, and there was a lot of people in the CAT group who felt that was a very strong issue to them. And so, we made sure that was a, a part of one of our options. Okay, option C. Oh, okay, so the differential there is the HVAC. And that's the, the roofing and the roof and HVAC work over at the high school. It's a major need that we have. And so, that was one of the things that was in the original ballot item. And so, it was definitely something we wanted to cover and kind of expose to the people who were gonna be looking at this and voting on it in the surveys and such, so they consider it. Option D, you gotta have the Cadillac in your options. So, this one includes the renovation of the high school. So, basically, everything about the roofing and the AC is just the tip of that iceberg. It's going back to the old section of the high school, correct if I'm wrong here, but the old section of the high school and getting in the portion that used to be the junior high and making it up-to-date. And there are a lot, turns out, there's a lot of stuff about our high school that the state says is not gonna fly. And we're kind of on borrowed time with that, they're like, okay, we'll let it go a little bit longer. And this is, a large portion of that is us catching up to standards. And option E, renovate high school. Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry. Yeah, option E, basically, same thing as, as the previous one, only they removed the auditorium. We wanted to show the modularity of our, of our kind of add-ons. So, just so that our, the people who were doing the reviews could actually see where that would jump around on there and see that we are also considering that kind of a modular concept.
I'm not as tall as Clay. My name's Rob Hewlett and this is Matt Peterson. We'll be presenting the recommendation process. First off, I'd like to thank all the community members that attended. It was a great time to get to know and, and learn about the schools and learn about you and what everybody does. And Ms. House, you did an outstanding job leading the, the CAT team. You know, a lot of people were skeptical, I thought that, you know, there was a lot of input and a lot of people saying this and that, but it, it really turned out well. I think the community came together and really want to say thank you to you all and to the community. You all did a great job, thanks for showing up. So, we reviewed the community polling and the online survey results. We voted in the final meeting. And the community with the votes and we took everything in consideration, all the comments, we were reading them, we were talking about them, going from table to table. And there was a lot of good information in there. And there were particular considerations we came up with, we were torn on. As a community, people were wanting one thing and half the people didn't want it. So, that's, you know, you gotta consider that. We worked it out and came down to a final consideration. So, working through these considerations, we also would like for the board to consider a few other items as well. And that's the displaced buildings. And we've marked that as, as added to the bond or bond, but again, that's for a consideration. The preschool, added, it'd be on the bond, operating expense. Or particularly, do it out of operating, sell Miami and put it back in operating. So, it's a wash, but seemed to be the preschool was kind of a fifty-fifty thing as well. Visitors bleachers, operating expense, first recommendation, or, you know, it could be added to the bond. That's, that's your consideration. The auditorium, community, again, community feedback was split on it. Really encourage you to read all of the community's comments, it was, they're really good. The polling itself, you know, some of the issues came out to fifty-one percent, thirty-four percent against. Things like that, when you add up the, the strongs and against, I think there was eleven-hundred and some people that, that did the online voting. Taking all that into consideration and taking everything that, that we have here, the HVAC and the roof, bond versus operating, again, a consideration. Our final recommendation that came up on this whiteboard was option A. And with option A, it was the sixty-four billion dollar option, which included, I can go back to it here in a second. I'll talk about it and then go back to it real quick. We recommended option A. We also would like to put a guideline in there for the board to try to keep it under seventy-two point five. And the reason seventy-two point five came about is, is we looked at what we offered the first time. We said, let's reduce that twenty-five percent. That's how that number came about. Take twenty-five percent reduction, that's that number. So, being a good faith of, of trying to offer something less to the community. With that, these are the, the considerations that we went through was bond, add to the bond, the displaced buildings. It's three and a half million dollars. Operating or bond for the visitors bleachers. Now, we understand that when the, some design considerations can be done to save the community more money. And if you take the new middle school and were to add it up against the bleachers when they're built in the future, we have to maintain, when we build a new press box, we have to make it ADA compliant. And we have to build an elevator. Imagine what the community's gonna think when they see an elevator built out here? I mean, think about that. So, with the consideration and designs considerations, you can take the middle school and you can build it back up against that. Then in the future, or if operating, they build those bleachers, they go ahead and build the elevator in the middle school. So, now it serves as dual purposes. So, the elevator can go up and go across to the, to the press box. So, there's some design considerations and things to help save money as well. The auditorium, you know, again, a lot of people for, for the, add it to the bond, or you can read all the comments and decide. That was one of those issues, sticky issues. And then the HVAC. And I know there was a lot of comments about people don't want to pay, you know, it's like a mortgage, putting on the percentages and things of your HVAC unit, so. So, again, that's, you can read the comments and figure that out. And then on the percentages?
Well, yes, there was, again, I'd like to thank not just Nancy, but her staff too, for all the effort that she put into this as well. But one thing that was very important to me, just kind of the phrase that I kept bringing up, was, you know, we could pay for things now, or we could pay more for them later. So when people wanna talk about a future bond, you also need to consider the cost of not just inflation, but the cost of building index. And right now, it is, it really is through the roof. And, you know, the longer we wait, the less we're gonna get for our money. It's really that simple. So, i- if you're not gonna include things in this bond, or talk about a future bond, or future operating levies to pay for the HVAC roof, or whatever it is, just keep in mind, the sooner you spend this money, the more you're gonna get for your dollar. And so, that was very important when it comes to the high school renovations. It is a big chunk. It was $27 million. We have inadequate spaces of an existing auditorium that only seats 350, 380 people, something like that. So, you need to consider the needs of our students and what is required for their future learning. I mean, we know learning is changing. We know there's a lot more STEM and robotics, and there's just, we don't have enough space for that. And so, one option is to include those high school renovations in a future bond. But again, remember, it's gonna cost you that much more in the future. The other thing that's not on these options is communication. I think the community advisory team, I could see light bulbs go above people's heads when, you know, we'd see a slide about how the process works, or the OFC limitations and so forth. And I encourage you to become educated voters, really. There's so much information, like Lisa said, that we went through. And I, I really think that nobody that voted yes is going to vote no in that team, but I think I could see the light bulb on some, no voters maybe being willing to vote yes. So, there's so much information to go through. We had six different meetings and how many hours doing this. And so, if you're just gonna, maybe I should save this for later, but make sure you get accurate information. Is that the last one?
I wanted to touch on this. This is the option A consideration, this is option A, and the considerations are listed underneath it for your information. Just going back over it. That's basically the board slide on a pretty slide.
So the final thoughts, as Matt was saying, there's some hot button issues. Read about them. Get in and do the comments. The misinformation, the communication piece that Matt was talking, it's gotta be addressed. I know we, we've just hired a communications director, and, and that's gonna definitely help. The reality of receiving the OCC funding, waiting for the OCC funding, the costs, and renovations and recommendations from the OCC are all from the OFCC. And we wanna make sure that we're transparent in how the bond and bidding process works and combat any mistrusts. I think that's one of the things that we learned a lot about was talking to certain people that had their viewpoints and reasons on why they voted one way or the other was specific. And you get to talking to neighbors and people about this information and to find out why they voted one way or the other. There's a lot of specifics, and sometimes a lot of those commonalities come up, and you can get that out of that information, reading it. So it's very good information for the board. And these are the considerations from the CAT team members. And again, you know, started out 60-some CAT team members, I think 50 regular team members, Nancy, her staff, all the hours and time that the CAT team members put in. And these are our recommendations, so. Somebody else wanna say anything?
Go ahead. One of the, one of the realities that I found striking, I'm pretty sure we all agree on this one, was, 'cause a lot of the comments were about, you know, wait for the state, right? And I just wanna drop this little piece of information, 'cause it was very eye-opening. We, right now, the, the complexity of waiting for the state is a very long, long conversation. So I'll spare you the details, but they are there, and we can answer those maybe offline. But the, the likelihood of us being able to get to the state anytime in the next few years is very low due to the complexity of it. I mean, at some point, that train will come back around, but here's the problem. Let's just say, and also, when the state does show up, is it 27%? We get 27% from the state, okay? So every year, if we were to say the total cost of additional construction and just fees and just everything coming up, you know, you normalize that, just get a number about 5% a year, right? So do the math, right? 5% times how many years is already past the measly 27% you get from the state? So if you, if you sit around and wait for the state, you start actually losing money. So I just, I did wanna point that out. That was something that I personally found very, very eye-opening. And that's why that we considered so many options, just freestanding without working with the state. And I think all this information is public too. I think the slide that Clay was referring to is last night's. Like you could watch that on the video. It is very eye-opening to see the time value of money. Thank you.
Very good, very good.
I wanna thank you. I think you did an excellent job of explaining the process, Lisa. Explaining OFCC, which is extremely complicated. And I think all of you did a great job. And I can't tell you how much we appreciate it. I wish everybody could sit through what you sat through and understand the complexities of OFCC and the financials. There was a lot of misinformation that was out there. And you've put a lot of really good information out, and we've got a great communications director now. And I think this is a good start, and we appreciate your recommendation. But I really wanna thank you for all the time you put into this. It's evident you guys spent a lot of time putting this presentation together too. But I appreciate the time all of the CAT team members took in, in sitting through this and really listening and absorbing and understanding what the issues are. 'Cause it's not easy. I've been on the board for a long time, and, you know, I kinda understand it, but, you know.
Well, you four and the rest of the CAT team, you all have honorary masters now in facilities, construction, and financing? Because, yeah, it's crazy difficult and confusing. Presentation was great, the work is great, thank you. You've been following along with it through the process, and I'm so impressed with the commitment that everybody made, because it is huge. Over 12 hours, 14 hours, plus tours, plus questions, reading, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know how many, how many hours you guys spent over the summer, on top of everything else. So, you know, thank you for doing that, for being willing to, to look at all of this and to learn about it, and then to take that knowledge and work through the process. Communication was very, very poor for the previous bond. It wasn't intentional. There was no desire to hide anything. We just, we just didn't do it right. So, you know, that is something that we have made a commitment to, that we're going to improve that. New systems, new person, et cetera. And what you all have done is really going to help us too, because we have now that data that you have put in a really nice format that makes it easier for people out in the community to understand. So, you know, on so many levels, thank you for everything you've done.
It's a complex process that we've been struggling with for a long time, because we have a lot of great needs, obviously, over the years. And all the things we were looking at are things that the school district and the community, I believe, very firmly really need. But if we can't pass the bond issue at the level for all the needs we have, we have to try to evaluate which are the most important needs at this point. And I think you've gone a long way toward trying to identify what are the most important things that we can't live without. That's the, that's the thing we needed from you. Thank you.
I, I think that the, the good take, a good takeaway from this is that we now have 50 to 60 voices that understand what the five of us up here know and have dealt with to get to these points. One of the biggest sticking points, I thought, in the whole process of the previous campaign was people were saying, well, how do you know it's $97 million? Where's the design? Where's this? Where's that going? And then you found out in your process, you can't even ask that question until you get to money. Which is totally backwards from everything everybody in real life does. When you go to buy a car, you know what it's gonna cost you before you call the banker. You know, it's, it's, so, so I think that was one of the big sticking points to the whole thing. I can't tell you how grateful I am, having been a longtime resident and also been on the board for as long as I have, with Dave and Debbie. And we've gone through this process, and we've seen this process change so many times over the years between OFCC and the previous group to that, and the previous group to that. And you get all these politicians, you know, mixing in with it, and all of a sudden, all these new rules come down, and what happened last time doesn't happen this time. You get new representatives, you're dealing with this guy this time, you build. Now you're dealing with somebody else when you build again that doesn't know the district. So, it's, it's really, I think the biggest takeaway is that 60 people now understand what happened, and they'll tell 60, and they'll tell 60, and we'll do the phone game and hopefully pass the next bond. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
One, one other point to that is, is talk about 60 people knowing this. Well, now all of this has been recorded. So if people wanna go back and learn about the history, get online, click on the video, watch it. It's all there.
Yep.
See, I've had people come up to me in parking lots, and suddenly 20 minutes, my day just disappeared.
That's right.
But I'm happy, I'm happy to go through with them, 'cause I feel like, you know, we need to get it out there.
Yeah, that's, that's board member time too. You get, you get hit a lot. But, and Rob knows that.
Thank you.
I wanna say thank you to the, the four presenters. I also wanna thank all of the CAT team representatives who are here, here this evening. I wanna thank them for being a, a great representation of the community. It certainly was an example of diverse perspectives and representation of the community coming together, listening to each other, learning from each other. Even last night, continuing to debate in a, in a very civil way. I think it was a great example of how people can have different opinions and be extremely civil about it. I want to thank them for their graciousness and their patience. This is not work that school superintendents typically do, is lead a process like this. Talked to my peers around the state, and no one else has done this. Architectural firms do this stage of the process. So there was some, some learning on my part on, on how to put things together and think things through. You know, part of that was going back to the community throughout the process to take that information to the community advisory team. So it was, it was great learning for, for me as well. So for, so everyone understands here the timeline. The board now has this, this recommendation. They will not be taking any kind of action tonight. The first real actions, discussions will begin at the October board meeting. And there's, there's still a lot to be decided. Is there going to be a next bond? When will it be? There are several options. What are the pluses and minuses of going in March, in November, the following May, the following November? All of those, those decisions still have to, to be made.
I think one thing you said is certainly very important to take note of, that most superintendents really don't get involved in that degree of trying to organize the community to come up with a plan. And I think that we owe you a great deal of thanks and appreciation for all of your efforts in doing this. You've done a great job. So I think that we have great admiration and appreciation for you and what you've done.
Well, thank you, Dave. And I'd say that it was the only thing to do when, when things kinda went sideways and it wasn't gonna be possible for an architectural firm to do it. It, it was important to go ahead and start the process and not let it, it wait, because people were asking so many questions and wanted to, to move forward in some way, and that timing needed to, to happen. So, you said it was, it was a good, it was a good learning process for me too.
I think it also demonstrated your commitment to this district as superintendent. You went above and beyond the call of duty to do this. It wasn't what you signed up for, it wasn't part of what your job description is. But because it is so important to the students, in the end, that's who we're all here for. And that's a focus that board members and superintendents and staff and administrators, they never lose sight of that idea, that students are what it's about. And, yeah, it's a struggle to get there sometimes, but you certainly went above and beyond. And I personally appreciate it, and I'm sure that, that everyone that was involved in this has great admiration for the amount of time you spent to put this together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, you didn't have anything else to do and no other problems to deal with this.
That's what I was just gonna say. You know, if the CAT members spent 12 hours, plus tours and research, et cetera, you spent many multiples of that, preparing, answering, et cetera. And the rest of your job performance did not suffer. So, I don't know how you did it, but we greatly appreciate it and very impressed.
I'm looking forward to catching up on my sleep. No, seriously, the questions were great. It was like, I, I never wanna say this about, to compare adults to former students, 'cause, 'cause adult learners are different. But it reminded me of those 24 years of, of teaching high school English in a class that had a million questions, and they were all great, and wanted to make sure that they were answered in a, in a timely way. Because we know that, you know, there's an art to asking the right questions and the great questions, and the community advisory team certainly did that. Or maybe, now, I'm, I'm all kidding, I'm kidding. Or maybe it was almost like being in a kindergarten class where every 25 kindergarteners are asking great questions all day, and I don't know how the kindergarten teachers do it.
Okay. We are at the public participation first round. You have something, do you have anything over there?
Yes. Lisa McKinney?
Please state your name and address. You have three minutes. He'll remind you when you have 30 seconds.
Thank you.
Sure.
Lisa McKinney, 6 Hogan Drive. I just wanted to speak individually as a CAT member to the board. I wanted to thank Nancy first, because you all just touched on it. She did an insane amount of, of work outside of her job duties. She and I, she entertained me more than once to meet with her on the side. You know, I scheduled meetings with her and came and talked to her about things that I didn't understand and to receive more information. She always responded, she always made time for me, so I thank her for that. I want to say to the board that out of all of this, there is a packet of over 500 comments from that online survey. And while that online survey does not represent our entire district, it is, that's a significant amount of comments. And I just want to really ask you to read those. I know it's a lot, and a lot of them say the same thing. But if you really kinda wanna get the pulse of the community and where they're at, it's going to inform the recommendation, it's going to inform your decision, and it's going to inform the communication that is necessary for the community. And I mean, necessary. So, I, I just really wanted to take the time to ask you to please read those. And I don't know how much you can hear on the videos when you watch them, or if you've watched all of them. But last night's video, where we were coming up with what to recommend, there was a lot of really great discussion, and there were a lot of things that we were kind of embattled on. And I would kind of almost like for you to see that as well. If you can't hear it, I apologize. You know, you could see Rob write on the whiteboard, but, but at any rate, you know, I'm, I just really wanted to ask that you dig deep into what we've brought you through this process, because I think it will really help to get us a junior high school. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Petersman.
Matt Petersman, 1776 Cotton Tail Drive. I, too, wanted to come up and speak as an individual, too, because I, I, at first I thought we were developing a master's facilities plan for what our community needs. And you can rank needs and wants, but, you know, a bathroom at the stadium should be a need, not a want. There's other things that, some of those comments, I, believe me, you should read them all because some of them are a little bit disturbing about who are students and who are not. Information about the auditorium, about how it may only service a certain number of kids or it's not education. And so I'm, I'm here to, to, to push for the auditorium, honestly. I would be curious to know what a, an economic impact study would have for building a thousand-seat auditorium in this community, what kind of economic impact that would bring. I, I go to dance, et cetera, six days a week. We go to Princeton. We go to West Claremont. We go to Mason. We go to Sycamore. We travel out of town and we go to these thousand-seat auditoriums and there's, they pay tens of thousands of dollars to bring these regional competitions into town. People will complain about traffic, but you ask a local business owner, hey, do you want to have more people come and visit our town and spend their money here? I, I would think that they would say yes. So, you know, are, are we developing something that's best for our community or are we trying to listen to the loudest voices? Because I think there is a certain component in this community that is very loud and I don't believe they would vote for any kind of bond. I've heard it from them. You see it in the, you see it in the results. Oppose, 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 oppose. So I encourage you to read through all this data. It's all public. Okay? So we've been through a lot. And as far as the high school renovations go, I think it's, there's a domino effect. If you build an auditorium, now we have this aged space that's going to need renovating anyway. We need, that's one of the comments on the slide. We're going to have to renovate the auditorium at some point in the future in the high school. Is it really worth it for 350 seats that can't even fit a, a grade level? It can't fit, it can't fit an award ceremony, can't fit a band performance? We have an excellent band and they have to perform in this gym with the bleachers that hit your knees? I encourage you to attend community events more. There's people that don't care about the traffic that, that happens at our school every morning and the safety. You should read some of the comments they have about site safety, about how it's not needed, that somehow we can build a junior high here and somehow not address the traffic flow and make it safer for the buses and the cars to drop off kids walking to the junior high, walking to the high school. So is that a, you know, $6 million for site safety? That's way out of, that's a want. That's, you know what I mean? There, you, really, please, I encourage everybody, not just the board, read those comments about what some of the voters in this company, in this community think.
Three minutes.
Because, because they don't drive that intersection every morning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Austin.
Thank you for allowing me a few minutes here. I'll get straight to the point. I want to address and ask.
Put your name and address.
Sorry. Kevin Austin, 888 Black Pine Drive.
Okay, because it goes on the tape.
My apologies. I want to address food in the classroom. I understand it's the policy of the district not to have food in the classroom. And I've come to find out that we have adopted a class this year supposedly, it's a pilot program for the state, that food is brought into the classroom and used in class. I'd like the board to look at that and see if that is the case. Food in classroom is important to me and my family. We, we deal with allergies. It's life threatening. I'd just like to look at that. Next thing I'd like to discuss or bring up is restroom policy. I understand and I've done some research, it is, is the decision is left up to the individual districts as to allow bathroom usage by identity or, or sexual identity, transgender. This is an issue for me and my family and I'd like the board to look at that. I'd like to know if that is the decision of the district and did the board approve that? That's, that's my question. Not trying to change policy tonight. It's not the forum to do that in, but it is an important issue to me and it is an important issue to a lot of members of the community for obvious reasons. I understand everyone needs to feel safe and has that right. I also understand that my family has a right to feel safe as well. And we need to consider both sides. There's got to be a solution. I'm all about finding solutions. I, I was raised that way. As y'all can tell by my haircut, I'm from the South. We believe in getting along, but at some point we stand up and say what we think. And I think there's a solution there that is amicable for everybody, but I think the board owes it to the community to make that decision, if it is a decision the board made or the district made, to make that decision known to the public. I come about this information secondhand. I feel like it wasn't put out for the community to know, here's the stance we take. Concerns me. I think it would concern all of us if we had a decision that was made and we weren't informed of that decision and then we had to find out secondhand. Community need, has a right to know. And I expect that we would treat that with the respect it's due and notify the community, here's our stance. If you're going to make a decision, if any individual, board, company, individual is going to make a decision, stand behind it, make it public. Let us know. We're owed that as people and we're owed that as a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Thomas.
Bill Thomas, A38 Dorjean. I wanted to, I also participated in the CAT team and I've went through these questions that were answered and some of the feedback. And it's apparent that no plan is going to pass without state funding has been over and over and over again, these comments. There's been comments of folks that have said the $100 is an extra, extra a month. It's going to, you know, it's going to cause them financial crunch. I, I have had conversations with, with the CEO of Elavir. I've had a conversation with another construction company. Even though there's no OFCC funding, I don't believe that all the opportunities for funding has been explored. As I met with Andrea and Chris a while back, we talked about potentially meeting with Elavir as a community, open community, to talk about additional funding options, whether it be through house bill money to fund some of the high school renovations. The problem that I have and have, have had is there's a lot of distrust. And I know we keep talking about we got to get past that, but bonds aren't going to pass in this community with this plan until the distrust issue has been addressed. I was walking to the football game past the trailers and it's an absolute disgrace looking at the bottom of those modulars, how they're falling off, the sides are falling off. I went to conferences today in the science room of the eighth grade, absolutely a disgusting room. I, I don't even, I don't even, I can't believe our kids are even attending class in, in such a disgraceful environment. Even back in, in the early days, the environments were cleaner than what I saw today in the science room for the eighth grade. It was absolutely appalling. This didn't just get here overnight either. This is something that's happened, has been going on for years. So to say that we're at this impasse and we need to do it now and that's great, we do need to do it now, but, you know, there's a lot of distrust in the fact that all of a sudden the sky's falling, the sky's been falling for years. And this should have been addressed a long time ago. That middle school is something that should have been replaced probably closer to 10 to 15 years ago. And it would have cost a lot less 10 or 15 years to go to replace. So coming at the community now saying, okay, now we got to spend all this money, we're going to have to find a way to collaborate internally, you know, as, as, as a school board, as, as a school administration, engage in community additionally outside of the CAT team to find and, and open up other opportunities to figure out additional funding.
30 seconds.
Because the, the only way you're going to get this passed is address the, the community distrust. And then I'll be brief on the other, the gentleman that talked about the, the transgender use in the bathrooms. It has come to my attention that the, a transgender student is using both bathrooms. And I had a conversation with Mr. Kaufman that assured me that that was not happening, that the identity, that the, the sex that they identify as the bathroom they're going to use due to Title IX. I agree with the gentleman. This needs to be established. You know, if I have my daughters using a bathroom and a, a boy comes in, you know, they shouldn't be using both bathrooms.
Three minutes.
And schools should come up with a better bathroom solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, let's get into the business of the night. Okay, Treasury report, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommend the approval of items A, the financial reports with the month ending August 31st, 2019. Item B, the establishment of front, of Fund 467 and the approval of the, of $500 donation from TST Consulting.
Motion, please.
Submit.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Yaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you.
Recommend the approval of item D, the, the annual appropriation resolution for fiscal year 2020.
Motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Yaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Howes, Superintendent.
The first item for approval is approval of the Business Advisory Council Representation Agreement between the Milford Exempt Village School District and the Claremont County Educational Service Center as attachment five. Two years ago, the state implemented mandated reporting on the activities and actions of the Business Advisory Council. And whereas Milford had had an active Business Advisory Council that looked and researched at specific problems or issues that did not necessarily fulfill the Ohio Revised Code requirements of a BAC, which has to do with work readiness, job force, knowledge, curriculum aligned to job needs. Actually, during the past seven years, we have been involved with the Work Readiness Initiative through Claremont County. That program looks at all of the requirements of the BAC. Claremont County ESC oversees the, the WRI and county schools. So it simply made sense to have our BAC function under the Claremont County ESC. And we can continue to do ad hoc superintendent committees if there is a specific problem or topic that we want a group of local business people, community pump people to study and make a recommendation to the board. It seems a better use of community time.
Okay, motion, please.
Submit.
Second.
Discussion. I, I want to comment on that. I think it's really, it makes great sense to do it this way. I mean, when you look at what the BAC, and I've, I've served on the BAC years ago and then attended with you the meetings that we did, and they were specifically targeted local community issues and didn't really meet the new guidelines, as you said. This, this is a perfect fit. Saves us a lot of time and effort by community people that come to the BAC by business people whose time is valuable to them, obviously, because they're in business. And I think it will actually ramp up the amount of attendance that we're going to get with the BAC, which has always struggled with, you know, getting enough attendance.
Right.
So it's a great idea. I really salute you for following that.
And our, and many of our business partners are involved in the WRI or the Work Readiness Initiative through, through internships, through speed mentoring, programs at the high school. So they are actively involved with our students in terms of our business partners within the community.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I agree. This makes a lot of sense. Over the years, the BAC, various BACs have provided great input.
Yes.
So I don't want to lose that.
Right.
The BAC, the way it's been structured now by the state is just the not, is just not the proper forum for it.
Right.
So we'll move this off. The, the county can do a better job than we can, really, at leading that because they have more resources to be able to put toward it. And as you said, we can still use our community members' expertise in different ways.
Yes.
Yeah, so great.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Yaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you.
Just a couple informational items. Item A is the first reading of the district calendar for the 2021 school year. We had the public hearing at the last meeting and this is simply the first reading and it'll become official at next month's. Are there any questions about that? Okay. The next informational item, I wanted to touch briefly on the local report card. You have a packet. I want to just go through that briefly. The top page of the packet, if you look at the top, is actually the 2016 report card. That was the first year that the state gave letter grades in these different components. There was no overall grade that year. And then the next page was 2017 and again, there was no component grade. And you can see that for the most part, things stayed the same from 16 to 17. Gap closing increased. Progress, which is value added, decreased. And otherwise, things were the same. In 2017, or 2017, 18 was the first year there was an overall grade. It is interesting to note that the state designed the system so that grades fall on a bell curve. So they are limiting the number of districts that can get each letter grade. Continue to, to maintain the same things as the year, year before. I think what's most significant is graduation rate continues to be exceptionally high. Always a lot of questions about this improving at-risk K-33 readers. That is something that quite honestly, districts can manipulate that score. They can choose how many kindergartners to include as being on track or not on track. And if you choose not to report them, you don't have a grade in that. What is most important is by the time our students are in third, finished third grade, it's been 99.9% or 100% meeting the third grade reading guarantee. So this is tracking students from kindergarten through third grade. And it's important to note that, that districts can choose to manipulate that by how they, they individually choose to report. We don't do that. This year's report card, everything stayed the same except for progress and that is the value added. And that is one that is, is very difficult to maintain because it measures students' growth from one year to the next. So if you have a group of students who make significant growth in the year before, sometimes it's difficult to, to maintain that same level of growth. It is a three-year average and if you have a year in there where they don't make as much because they made so much the year before, it begins to, to make an impact. And to give you an example of how absurd the progress measure is and one of the things that's impacting it. We have a lot of seventh graders taking, seventh grade accelerated math, do really well, pass the seventh grade math state test, and then they go from seventh grade math to the first year of high school math. 95% of those students who are, were taking high school math pass the state test, but their value added was a, a two-digit negative number. So it, when you even think about it from a logical point, students went from seventh grade math to the first year of high school math, but they didn't grow enough. So that's where that, that data ends up.
And they're still doing well in the ninth grade math.
Absolutely.
You do that?
So, yes. Yeah. So there we go. So ultimately, the decisions we make as a district, we have to decide whether we continue to do what's right for individual students or we make decisions that make the district look good. There's really not a way to do both. The, the indicators met grade, we could tell most of our eighth graders, you're not taking the first year of high school math, you're going to stay in Math 8. We would meet that indicator then without any problem. We would meet that indicator then without any problem. We would tell a large group of students who want to take American History, Advanced Placement of American History, can't do that, have to stay in traditional American History and take the state test. We've chosen not to do that. I still believe that that is the right thing to do. I find it interesting that some people who have some things publicly to say about this are people who would be infuriated if their child was treated like a number and told that their child could not take what he or she was ready to take because it might impact the district's overall grade. So that's my...
I know there's been a lot of discussion about changing the format for the report card. Do you have any updates in terms of what the latest is on that process?
Well, I sat on the State Committee for the Prepared for Success component. And it is going, one of the things that came up from that is, Prepare for Success, if you're in exceptionally wealthy and small district, you have a chance of earning an A there. And maybe a B. It is highly skewed toward students who are going to a four-year traditional program. It's highly skewed toward schools where only a select number of students are allowed to take advanced classes. On the committee were superintendents from rural districts who were beyond frustrated. Said, "We live in a farming community. Our students are, they're going to run their family farms. They're going to be extremely successful. And there's not one way that they can earn points in Prepared for Success." The other one is, we have special needs students who continued their education after the four years of high school. Again, extremely successful, but not a way to earn points in Prepared for Success. It's highly skewed. The one thing that came out of the meeting that is good, there is going to be points now for military enlistment. But we said, how can that not be acknowledged as Prepared for Success? So it's not in there this year, but it will be coming, so.
Well, over and above what the report card says is how our students are prepared once they leave here and how they do. No matter where they are going, if they're going to college or if they're going into the workforce. And we look at that, right? Do we have ways to track that? And how are our students doing?
Yes.
Sorry, I kind of ran that all together. Can you just give us an idea of, you know, how are our students doing when they graduate and they move on?
In terms of our demographics, we have students who, once they enter college, graduate in four to five years. It's a percentage rate that is in line with communities like, that are similar to ours demographically. I think we know from graduation ceremonies how many of our students choose to enlist. And, you know, we're continuing to support students earning industry credentials, whether that is on our own campus or at one of the Great Oaks Career Center campuses.
And I know we've heard from many, many students that they get to college and they are as prepared or often more prepared than students from other schools. So obviously, we're doing something right.
Well, way before the report card became a political football for districts in Ohio, the mission of this community has always been, how many parents want to stifle the growth of their child? And that's how we got to the individual, and that's what we work with. Why would we hold somebody back that is able to do more? No one does that. I mean, no one does that.
We don't hear...
I look at this that way, and I also look at it as, I've never seen a percentage on any of these reports that shows any transient move in, move out. Okay, so you lose 10 students that maybe got you to the next point level. They move out. And that's, there's no way to measure that in these reports.
Right.
So to me, this is really kind of fluff, if I must say that. It really is.
And I'm going to...
Go ahead.
No, I was going to say that I have empathy for superintendents across the state. You know, we're very proud of our graduation rate. But when students enter high school, we don't have that many students who are transient at that stage.
Which is typical because they don't want to move the child at that level.
Right, right. But we look at other districts across the state where their graduation rate is C, D, F. And then you listen to the superintendents. They may get 100 new students their senior year who have no chance of graduating. They're like, "But we have the student for a year, but it's our graduation rate." So it's a system that is reflective of...
Well, it sets some people up to fail.
Yes.
That's what I was going to say.
Basically.
It's good, you know, we do look at state test results. We look at it from the standpoint of curriculum alignment, where we can make improvements. So it's useful data.
But it's not the end-all for...
Right.
You know, we can't hold this up and say, "Well, we're failing because..."
It's never been an apples-to-apples comparison to any district, whether they border your district or whether they're in northern Ohio. It's never been. I've never put much into that. Now, I know we have to do it. I know we get graded on it, but I don't, I'm more about the child.
Yep.
But I thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
Okay. Human Resources, Ms. House.
The following items for approval miscellaneous items, item A. Administrative items, or item, item A. Certified items, A through C. And then exempt employee items, A and B.
Okay, so. Let's call this correctly. We have miscellaneous A, administrative A, human resources. Certified items, human resources, A, B, C. We have exempt employee items for human resources, A and B. Motion, please.
Submit.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Yaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you.
We have the following classified items for approval, items A through, sorry. A through D.
Motion, please.
Submit.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Yaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you.
And we have the following supplemental duty, people activity, and consultant items for approval, items A through F.
So move.
Motion, please. You got it, Dave.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Yaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you.
I want to make a comment on item F, number three. Approving Mr. Hewlett as high school computer science volunteer. As you know, our high school computer science teacher is out. Mr. Daniels and Mr. Spicer have, Mr. Kaufman have looked extensively for an instructor. UC has tried to help us. There is just not one, anyone available. To have another one of our teachers get trained, that's a possibility, but that's a whole year process. There are numerous courses that have to be taken. Mr. Hewlett approached Mr. Kaufman after parent-teacher conferences with news that his employer, U.S. Bank, is willing to give him release time, a couple days a week, to help volunteer in the classroom to help answer students' questions. We have them on an online program, but they need someone to help to answer their questions. So we're very grateful to Mr. Hewlett's employer, a great example of community and giving back, and for his time just to, you know, a face to help answer students' questions in a situation that we're all trying to come together to make the best of a really tough situation, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Rob and U.S. Bank. That's amazing.
Yes, I thanked Rob at the beginning. When I heard that that happened, I was ecstatic that he stepped up and your employer stepped up too. So, great job. Thank you. Business operations.
Okay. Do this presentation for Mr. Johnson. It's a presentation of approval of the architect and engineering contract for potential elementary roofing project. So some background information. What we call our four-pack elementary schools were opened in 2003. And then the other two in 2004. All four buildings were built with asphalt shingle roofs with a life expectancy of approximately 20 years. With this project timing, the roofs will be placed when they are 17 years old. The reason is, we have experienced some premature cracking of the asphalt shingles. There has been some repair work done, but this has begun to get bad very quickly. We did ask a local contractor to provide some initial options along with some just overall budget information. These are not bids, these are budgets to work with. Each roof is approximately 90,000 square feet. And so, again, just some ballpark budgets from a local contractor. The asphalt shingle budget, 54 million. A standing metal seam budget is about 86 million. Again, this is for all four buildings.
5.4. 5.4?
8.6.
8.6, I'm sorry.
It's been a long day.
It's been a long day. Thank you. And then two different types of thermoplastic membranes, TPO and PVC. It's by .2 and 6.9. 2 million of the project cost will come from the O-34 Classroom Facilities Maintenance Fund. It'd be a million in 2020 and then another million in 2021. That is that half mil that was required when we entered the agreement with OFCC. That a half mil was put in annually to that O-34 fund, and that may only be used on OFCC projects. The balance of the costs would have to come from the general fund. Over the next several months, a full lifecycle cost study will be completed to help decide which type of material is the best use of district funds. So the architect and engineer selection. It's advertised the request for qualifications in local papers and in local plan rooms. That's what architects use in July 2019. We also emailed those that had expressed interest in our potential middle school project directly. So you can advertise and also, you know, send requests to those who, you know, might be interested. So those were sent to SHP Leading Design, Elevar, and McGill Smith Ponchen. The statement of qualifications were due July 26, 2019. Two responses were received from SHP Leading Design and Mays Consulting and Evaluation Services. The other ones that we reached out to just said that they were not interested in sending in the RFQ. So they did reply there. So myself, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Lucas, and Mr. Hamm, because they are on the, the board members on the Buildings and Grounds Committee, reviewed the statement of qualifications. And the recommendation is to award the architect and engineer service contract to SHP Leading Design for 177,000. These services include the evaluation of existing conditions, the full design services of new roof, including assistance in evaluating different materials, computer rendering of the different material types so aesthetics can be evaluated, development of bid packages and permit drawings, and contract administration services. Couple things that we looked at from the RFQ. Mays Consulting and Evaluation Services is out of Columbus. It is not local. SHP is local. Also, SHP has done significant amount of work in Claremont County and understands the Claremont County Engineering Office and Approval. Mays had not yet done any work in Claremont County. And we believe that that is a benefit to know how a particular county works when it comes to approvals for anything that has to do with engineering and construction. So February, March 2020 is when it would go out for project bids. Because, well, it goes out for bid. Summer 2020 is, would be the completion of the McCormick and Albury Projects. And summer 2021 would be the completion of the Meadowview Projects. Some questions, you know, why do you need an architect and engineer? Because this is a really complex and complicated building envelope. This is very different than putting a new roof on a home. There are significant safety concerns with roofs of schools. The types of materials need to be evaluated extensively as well. That cost is a typical architect fee, 2.5 to 3% of the total cost. And actually, the 177,000 is a, is a good, it's good because all four buildings are the same. So we don't have to design for four different buildings. So there is some cost savings, the fact that they're all the same.
Do we have to bid again for the second buildings? And I've met at you in Patterson, since the cost may change in that year. Are the bids going to be good for all four buildings?
The bid would be good for all four buildings. What it is, is that whoever is awarded the bid, they don't necessarily have the personnel, the crews, to do all four in one summer.
That was going to be my question. They're going to actually do the work during the summer when the kids are not there.
Yes. Yeah.
Will SHP be able to evaluate the current roofs and figure out why they didn't last as long as they should have?
Yeah.
That's part of that first slide. The big benefit to this too is, I think a lot of people think, "Well, why do you have to, like, have an engineer to do that?" Well, as you start into this project, if you need to change structural dynamics of that roof envelope, you're going to need an architect to do that. And that's already included in that. You're also going to have management done by the architect firm. So when you get into the actual process, doing the work, and the contractor has a problem, that architect is going to work through that problem. It's not going to take resources that, you know, we would spend as a school district. It's already covered in that cost. So there's a big chunk of that that's really in managing those projects. Now, I think that may be overlooked sometimes.
Yeah, the managing and the engineering, I mean, there has to be expert engineering when we're talking about a school roof. So what you would be approving tonight is the AII, the contract for the architect and engineer.
Okay, I need a motion for...
So move. Second.
Discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Yaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, some informational items for business and operations. Just a very brief transportation update. Our transportation contractor, they're continuing to have drivers take attendance on bus routes. We're continuing to monitor that. That is providing some fairly interesting information and data about actual ridership on buses. Continuing to work with the United Education to schedule route timings, like official timings. And all parties impacted will be communicated when that happens, when those timings are going to occur. And then we have worked with Peterman, our transportation contractor. And then we have worked with Peterman, our transportation contractor, that the router position is now going to be our employee, and then the cost for that employee is going to be deducted from the contract. So that we have a Milford employee located in, within the Transportation Department.
Without being too specific, have there been surprises in the attendance statistics in the ridership?
Some of them are very, very low.
Greg, may I ask your question?
Yes. Two items for approval, items A and B.
Motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Yaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you.
And our final information item is a video that our Director of Communications and PR put together in a very short amount of time, Wendy Planica. And Dr. Jill Hollensworth is going to introduce and talk about Constitution Day.
Thank you, and I want to thank Wendy for doing this. It's a pleasure to introduce our video this evening. In honor of Constitution Day each year, our high school American Government, English, and Drama students prepare a day of fun activities and learning for the third graders in two of our elementary buildings. This year, it was Boyd E. Smith's turn and McCormick's turn. The third graders from those two buildings traveled to Milford High School this past Tuesday, met their individual high school buddy, and then spent a half a day learning about colonial woodworking, sewing revolutions, seeing revolutionary artifacts, learning about colonial farm animals, playing colonial games, and participating in a scavenger hunt to find the words of the preamble.
So we are celebrating Constitution Day, and for about four or five years now, Constitution Day has been a tradition at the high school. So we invite up third graders from two of our elementary buildings every year. This year, they're each getting their own high school buddy, and the high school buddies have written notes and made videos for them leading up to this day. And so they just saw a performance with different historical figures who have embodied the values of the Constitution. And now they get to explore different areas of the high school where we have special events going on. There is a scavenger hunt where they're looking for the last words of the preamble all throughout the building. They get to make silhouettes, see colonial woodworking in the maker's space. And this year, thank you to one of our community members who has shared a lot of his historical artifact collection with us, including Revolutionary War-era newspapers, so that the kids can actually look at those and learn more about them.
It's Constitution Day here today, so basically, we're walking around with a scavenger hunt, and we're trying to take pictures with stuff like general welfare, posterity, and Constitution around the school. And we already saw a play, we went to go pet Buffy, and then we took Polaroid pictures with George Washington.
Thank you.
The third graders loved it.
I bet.
I'll bet they did. Okay, we are at the final public participation segment.
I do have one. James Rhodes?
Okay.
James Rhodes, 1106 Heatherstone. I know most of you know that I'm running for school board this November, and of one of the many things, one of them is transparency. I was extremely frustrated earlier this week when I was at the township trustee meeting to find out that the school district just gave a tax abatement to a company. An item that was covered last month just blazed right past, had no discussion between the five members. Something like that just, it's eighty-four thousand dollars over seven years. I mean, I really just don't have much more to add without being extremely frustrated. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, the next board meeting, October 17th, right here, 7:00 PM. 1099 State Route 131, Milford, Ohio. Any other discussion by the board?
I just wanted to bring up that before our next board meeting will be the Milford Foundation, Milford Schools Foundation Night of the Stars, which is, it's October 9th, right? And you can get tickets online at milfordschoolsfoundation.org. And it's a great night and a great organization. They raise money for different programs in the district that we couldn't afford otherwise. So if you have any interest and you can support them, please come out.
Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Yaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for coming this evening.